Good evening, folks, and welcome to our last meeting of this panel of the year, end of this term, so this is a very meeting. Before we begin, let's just have a moment of silence at our special meeting a couple of nights ago. We did hold in our thoughts, and I don't know if there's been an outcome, but a gentleman with a voting incident a couple of days ago, I don't know if there's been an outcome there, but let's hold him in our thoughts and prayers, as well as all in our country, in our state and in our city, who are feeling challenged by the holidays, and let's keep them in our thoughts and do what we can to support that. Thank you. Who's joining me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What people can call a roll?
Councilor Shan?
Present.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Councilor Zede?
Here.
Councilor Donahue?
Here.
Councilor Granis?
Here.
Councilor Harmon?
Present.
Councilor Lee?
Here.
Councilor McCauley?
Here.
Councilor Preston?
Here.
Thank you. That would lead us to public comment, if there is anyone in person, and I see a few names up there, and if anyone remotely would like to make public comment, if they could raise their hand at this point, and this would be on a matter on the agenda, and up to two minutes, and a person who resides in Newburyport or does business in Newburyport would be welcome to give public comment. I do not see any remotely, so we'd start with Charles Chivaco.
Yes, Charles Chivaco here on a late addition to a request for license renewal for used motor vehicles. This is a license I've had for 20 years in town now and have always been in conformity with the original requirements that were set forth when the license was first granted, and this is on me. From a timing perspective, I didn't realize that the folks that I've been dealing with the last few years, the License Renewal Committee, if you will, it seems like they're all going to be terming out here and onto other ventures, so I'm hoping to have what would probably take now a two-month renewal at this point in time with new folks coming in, and I would understand that, just hoping to expedite it for this month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Snow?
Jane Snow, High Coffin Street. I think tonight's a little bit sad. I'm so used to seeing all the faces. I've gotten to know many of you, and I've seen how you've come into the very first meeting as being a counselor, and the look is, what have I gotten myself into? Because people are standing up, sitting down, doing all this, saying things, and you can just see. And then I've had the great pleasure of seeing all of you morph into beautiful butterflies, and you do great things for all the residents in the council, and I so appreciate it, and it's really sad to see six of you leaving tonight. So I don't want you to leave without hearing that the residents truly do appreciate all that you do, the hours away from your family, hours on the telephone and helping residents and things, and it is greatly appreciated. So, and it was kind of nice because I also got a chance to see some new faces that will be coming and joining us as of the first of the year. So again, I wish you all the best in whatever you go on to do, and thank you so much for giving us all of your time, and to all of you, I wish you a very happy, healthy, and prosperous 2026. I'm going to have to get used to saying that, but again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. That would lead us, seeing no public comment online, I'll double-check that. We would go to any late files? Thankfully, none. All right, that would lead us to Mayor's comment.
Sorry for just running in, just made it. We were having our High Street listening session, and it's still going on, so we had a lot of people show up, and I'll probably be coming to the council for some solutions early in 2026. I didn't have a whole lot for you tonight on your last meeting here of 2025. I did have a little update on the city solicitor. The city solicitor, our current city solicitor, Karis North, has let the council president and I know that they will not be seeking reappointment, and so we have been searching for our new city solicitor for 2026. We interviewed two firms last week, so we're really excited about that. NHTL has committed to a smooth transition and will handle all active legal matters, and again, we're hoping to get a new appointment in for your first meeting in January. Recreation Youth Center, I just mentioned, construction is ongoing. The gym framing started about a week and a half ago, which is really exciting to see. We'll be having a fundraising announcement next Wednesday, so stay tuned, but that's something we'll be doing with Institution for Savings in Newport Bank and the Mary Alice Accarelli Foundation. To outgoing counselors tonight, this is your last meeting of 2025. You know, public service isn't easy. We have six of you who are moving on. I just want to thank you for your public service. I do have something from the city for each of you, but I would just like to recognize you and your number of years on the council. So first, Jenny Donahue, four years. Ward three counselor Heath Granis, two years. Ward six counselor Byron Lee, six years on the council. Ward five counselor Jim McCauley, six years on the council.
He's a little more than six, though. He got sworn in a little early. Filled in a couple of months.
At-large counselor Connie Preston, four years on the council. Last but not least, the pride of Plum Island, at-large counselor Mark Wright, four years on the council. Yeah, just thank you again for your public service. Again, especially in the climate we're living in right now, it's not easy to get people to step up for their community, and you all did that, and so I really appreciate that. The last thing I'll just say tonight is inauguration is set for Monday, January 5th, 10:00 a.m., and we're putting a wonderful program together, and I hope you all can be there. Have a great meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the mayor?
First of all, thank you very much. It's been an honor and pleasure serving with you. Question about the DPS director, acting DPS director. How is this, can you update us how the search is going, and the interim appointment is probably coming due? Can you give us?
We have an announcement on that tomorrow, so that announcement is coming. I will tell you, we had a number of conversations with the Collins Center around the search. We actually just got another resume today, so we're actually vetting that right now, but we haven't got a huge response as far as resumes go, so we're at the point now that we're going to make the decision whether we're going to try to push forward on an interim, looking for a more longer-term interim, I guess, a shorter-term, longer-term interim to get us through this next year, or anywhere between, you know, six to 12 months, or do we repost the position? Because it's actually not even posted right now. Do we repost it in January and see if we get another crop of candidates?
Thank you.
HR director started today, Steven Crowley. He said he's going to be back tomorrow, which is great. He had a great first day.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. That would lead us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes for the November 17th and the December 3rd meeting. One communication, communication 683, the Newburyport Retirement Board expense budget to be received and filed. No applications, no transfers. A number of appointments. For reappointments, we have appointment 608 Robert U League, 174 Merrimack Street to the Tree Commission until 12:15:28. Appointment 609, Joe Texera, 44 Hale Street, Community Preservation Act Committee, 12:15:28 to go to Planning and Development. Appointment 610, Dr. Richard Max Tilson, 30 Winter Street, Board of Health, 12:15:28 to Public Works and Safety. Appointment 611, Michael Merriman, Nine Unicorn Circle, Amesbury, Assistant Harbor Master, Shelfist Constable, Special Police Officer until 12:15:28 to Public Works and Safety. The same appointment for 612 is Michael Mallette, Seven Summit Drive, North Atkinson, New Hampshire, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 613, Gregory Downs, 40 River View Drive, Newbury, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 614, Ben Molner, 12B Summerwood Drive, Hampton, New Hampshire, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 615, Andrew Malatesta, 42 Pike Street, Salisbury, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 617, Paul Cardachi, 135 Beach Road, Unit C5, Salisbury, Constable for City Business until 115:29 to Public Works and Safety. The following new appointments, appointment 616, Patty Ann Bampus, 2 Neptune Street to the Tree Commission until 115:29. Appointment 618, Stephen Diskin, 9A Monroe Street to the Emma Andrews Library Branch, 115:27 to go to Community Services. And appointment 619, Elizabeth Page Baumann, 18 Elm Street to Fruit Street, Local Historic District Commission to go to Planning and Development. No orders to be carried over, and the following are to be removed from the respective committees. General Government, ordinance 209, licenses and permits, applications 291, 292, 293, and 294, order 672. Planning and Development, appointment 6, I'm sorry, 565, and Communications, 529, 534, and 635, and ordinance 210. And from Public Works and Safety, Communications 673 and 680, and ordinance 211, and order 775, and that is the consent agenda.
The wish of the council? Counselor Khan?
Yes, so council president, I know that anything we're going to move to the next council has to be supported by a supermajority, so I'm going to request we remove all the appointments out of the consent agenda, and then we could collectively move them to the next term.
Second. All right, so that's to remove them, put them in the regular agenda for now?
Yes.
Okay. We can do that? We don't need to vote on that? We can just do that? I should know these things by now, shouldn't I? I can read Mark.
No.
We can just do it.
Just do it.
A council can make a change, remove something from the consent agenda.
Second.
I'm glad you did.
Take it with me.
I don't want to let Counselor Wright down tonight, I really don't. All right, so that's been removed. Thank you, Counselor Khan, that makes a lot of sense. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, and perhaps we could also add, you know, if there is a motion to approve as amended, also add the mayor's comment, receive and file.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, all those opposed. Right, so that would lead us to the regular agenda, and...
The first order tonight on the regular agenda is Communication 684, the final report of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Water Projects prioritization.
Point of order, please. Would you entertain moving up the poll hearing vote to the beginning of the meeting for the gentleman that's waiting?
Counselor Wright, is there a second on that? Okay, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you, Counselor Wright. All right, so that would get us to the poll hearing, and I know there is an emergency preamble already plugged into that, so that's Order 778, emergency preamble, which we would deal with separately, and then Order 778.
Emergency preamble.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded by Counselor McCauley, seconded by Counselor Preston. Any, I can't, we don't discuss emergency preambles, correct? Purpose, just to be to get it over with. All those in favor, we'll do a roll call.
This is for the emergency preamble for Order 778, the request, the poll request on High Street. Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes. Motion to approve Order 778, the underlying order, the request for the poll.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Counselor Zede?
I just think that this should be referred to committee, and National Grid should be sending us a very complete plan of what they want to do with the city of Newburyport, instead of doing this drips-and-grabs poll at a time, and now is the time. Once they're installed, the opportunity has passed. That's also why I oppose the emergency.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Really, I'm not satisfied with the explanation here. I agree with my colleague from Ward one, a comprehensive plan to understand if these are going to be popping up all over town would be good, so given this is in Ward four and we don't have that plan or solid answers on the justification for something like this in an area where it's getting very cluttered with polls, I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Shan?
Quick question, Council President. Through the chair, can I ask National Grid how long do you think it might take for us to get the overarching plan for Newburyport for these polls?
Sure. Page, we say again. How long will it come to get a plan for you, to, I know, a comprehensive plan? What I would suggest you do, actually, is to talk to the liaison for the town, and he might be able to work with you. I will pass that on to the liaison tonight, your request to find out how long it's going to take. It could be...
Two more, it could be 20 more.
And you guys want to know. I get it, and I can pass that on to them to see if they can contact, I guess, the city clerk, Kathleen, with a plan, an overall view, so that you can understand. There may be a reason why they were coming with one at a time, two at a time, and then waiting a few months. Could be, it could be a budget thing. You might only have a budget for, like, doing three of them a year or something like that, so, but you want a clear view of that, too, so, and hopefully I can get someone that will answer all those questions for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, also, through the chair, if I could, so if we were to say no to this tonight, is there some particular urgency around this poll?
This particular one, no. I mean, they're all, like, in a timeframe, we'd like to get them in in something like this in six months, you know? Obviously, the petition's part of it, getting the equipment delivered, whether it's a high, a long lead time to get it or not, I don't know. It could be, it could take us three months to get the, 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 that we're going to put on this poll that you, hopefully you'll pass tonight, you know? So it's not an emergency, but it's obviously, in the long run, it's something that when we implement it, it's going to make everything a lot more reliable for everybody, so.
Counselor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. The closure you're talking about would not be able to be outfitted on one of the existing polls?
That's correct. The designer will, if this was me doing it, I didn't do it, but when I go about stuff like this, whether it be a recloser, and I do put those into, not this particular one, but I'll go about looking for a poll that's a great candidate in a general area of town, maybe a two-block radius, you know, and which is a poll that doesn't have anything on it, it's in a straight line with the other ones, because the reclosers need to have that. So that's why we're asking for it in this particular spot, is because the polls around it might be already filled up with things that we can't, we can't use them, so.
And from a perspective of maybe replacing a poll with that, you know, outfitting, an existing poll replacement, is that ever considered, or is there some more complexities associated in terms of downtime in doing that type of work? You know, it's...
No, that's the first thing, because we don't have to spend the time to ask the city for a poll. If we've got one that's in place, we might need to replace it because it's an old poll or it's not big enough or tall enough, but we can go about the process of doing that right away, rather than having to go through the, usually about a two, three-month process coming to the town, the city.
So I would assume if that is a critical element, that an existing poll is looked at and is not adequate, and the switching out is not feasible, is that at all considered in this process of identifying that a new poll is needed?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, so we're talking about adding another, a new poll, where there's already some very close proximity, mainly to allow to outfit with the recloser that you're talking about, that will allow the, isolating the system if there's a need for outage to happen. I guess my question is, we have existing polls that are somewhat very close by, and I'm hearing that those may not be adequate for the reclosure system that we're talking about, so my question's really if a poll could be easily swapped out with a new one that could take this as opposed to adding more polls.
I can't answer that, I haven't analyzed it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I would hope that would be somewhat, and I'm guessing if a team comes out, they would look for something.
Again, that's what they, that's kind of like what I was trying to say, is that we analyze it prior to doing it. I would have, and I wouldn't have, that's the last, not the last thing, but it's almost the last thing we want to do, is come to the city, ask for a poll spot. It's one more that we have to have, too, so.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Donahue, and then Counselor Lane?
Thank you, President. So first with the chair, would it be possible, like, if you had to put up a new poll, if it's larger than the other two polls, is it potential to move the recorder on the other two polls to the new poll and remove one of the other two polls, so that there's not three total? Is that, or something that could be considered in the future?
Okay, I'm kind of asking if there's equipment on the polls that are adjacent to it to move them? Is that what you mean, or?
Right, like, if we put up a new poll that just has the one thing at the top, is it possible to swap the things that are on the existing polls to the new poll so that we have, we can take one of those old polls down?
Oh, and have the same amount of polls in the end? Kind of deal. That's also another way we can do it. If the polls are really close, we'd ask for a new poll and remove one of the ones that exists, basically relocating poll number 25 50 feet instead of putting a new poll 50 feet away from poll 25.
It might be something to consider.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, that's something we'll do. If there's just a transformer on a particular poll that's a candidate that we could use, we can move the transformer to polls down, and it works, that's what we would do. I mean, all those things are, like, part of the analysis when we, when I go, when I would go out to do something like that, yeah.
Okay. And then secondarily, can anyone answer for me, where in relation to this location is the hospital, is Angix?
It is at the foot of Ross and Town.
Okay, so I'm wondering if that has any, you know, is a factor at all for outages? Like, if that's a piece that might be worth considering for this location because it is in that vicinity? I mean, I understand if you have an experience of a ton of outages in the neighborhood, but I would imagine that it would be a good safeguard to have, you know?
Just wondering, I have a thought. Self-expression, not a thing that we put into, that's just my opinion. My problem with the fall is the location, there is a crosswalk right there, and there's a, there's going to be a line of sight with students coming from the high school right there, especially if it's a bigger poll. So if you're telling me that you could do it on another poll, my recommendation would be to come back and figure out how you can use the existing poll down the street, because that is right in the core, and as small as it might be, that's a tough, that's a tough street, there's been accidents there, awesome town, but if you're coming down High Street, you can't see from that crosswalk for a limited period of time, so that's why I'm in a position.
Again, I can't tell you.
No, you may have fans coming after you. I feel bad, I mean, this is it. We're going to be the longest thing in the last meeting.
If the original motion was drawn, you can refer it back to the next session and keep the work in that session. And with that in place, I would like to...
So we could refer this back and take this up in January, but again, it sounds like people are asking for more of a comprehensive plan, whether it's due...
And you want the comprehensive plan before January? Okay. Or we can do that.
Before we consider it.
See what we can do. Give you, someone that can give you a letter or something like that, describing...
Counselor McCauley made the original motion, seconded by Preston.
I'll draw the emergency motion.
So Preston's withdrawing her second.
Motion to refer to Public Works and Safety and invoke Rule 7H to carry it to the next session.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Voice vote, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed.
Can we also do appointment, or application, probably 291, which is the used car license that we heard about, if it's, it's okay with the chairs, just to... It's 296.
Could I have a quick comment? I mean, what does the city need now? Do you need a letter stating the comprehensive plan delivered prior to planning on the January meeting now, delivered?
I think that sounds correct. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so this is going to be referred to a committee, or Public Works and Safety, and then come January, that will be, a meeting date will be set on that, and this will be on the agenda, they'll reach out to you, or whomever the contact is on this, and ask to either attend that meeting remotely or in person, and provide the plan, and you can send the plan earlier or present it that night.
That would be the preferred way, preferred way, I would think, for everybody, if we can get you something that satisfies everything that you're looking for prior to the meeting, as opposed to taking your time here, I would think.
If you could have something prior to the week, the week of January 5th, as a new council comes in, then they'll be setting their new committees down, and this will be on their agenda.
Maybe the town engineer, or might be the person we're going to address this to, or should it be just the city clerk?
City clerk.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boucher. Okay, to counselor from Ward one's suggesting we take up application...
291.
296.
296, did I get that number wrong?
Okay, we did the both. There's two, there's two second and ones in the agenda.
Both 295 and 296, I believe, are longstanding applicants. Sorry, so motion is to approve?
So first we have to waive the rules?
Yes, so make a motion to waive the rules and declare an emergency.
Are you doing the new ones coming in, or are you doing the ones out of your committee?
The new ones coming in.
The new ones coming in.
The committee will be voting out anyway.
All right, so this is on application 295 and 296, motion to waive the rules.
So 295, so this is to waive the, we're comparing, what is the application, 295. Counselor Wright, and seconded by...
Second.
Did you want to speak to the emergency, or no?
Sure. So just with the, with the change of the bar, it's likely that this won't be decided until February, and... Which would be a difficulty for these two applications, because they won't be able to sell any used cars at any of the auctions that they may want to attend during this period.
Point of order, can I just get clarity? I thought we, we didn't yet vote to do a supermajority on the first item, which we're moving into the next session. Is that correct, invoking 7H? So...
It's in the regular. Do we vote on that? It was already in the regular agenda? For the purpose that they could waive the rules tonight as an incoming, and you could vote on it in one reading, in one...
I thought we just voted on that, didn't we?
If I could just say, I believe Counselor Zede made, the motion was to refer to Public Works and Safety, and he added...
In the next session.
And he added Rule 7H, so...
Yes, and we voted yes?
Yes, as far as I know.
For the poll hearing.
For the poll hearing, for the poll hearing.
We did a vote, we did a voice vote.
Right, but we're sending it to committee. I just want to make sure we're continuing this to the next committee. I don't remember doing the vote to send it with the supermajority to the next session.
Oh, for the poll hearing one?
Not for that, that application, that's in Public Works and... Yeah.
I thought we did, though.
He said he wanted to do...
For which one?
But we didn't vote on it.
Order, order 778.
You waive the rules for 7H and refer to Public Works and Safety.
We did.
I think we did a voice vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did a voice vote.
We voted to invoke Rule 7H and move it to committee.
Okay.
And just, just a point of order, 7H is a majority, not super.
Oh, I thought it was a supermajority.
So as any matter remains a committee, at the end of the council's two-year legislative session shall die unless a majority of the full council votes.
All right, thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
I meant to, it confused me. So it's not super majority, it's just a majority.
7Hs.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
This, however, is a super majority. So this is, so this is, so this is the application 294, 295, which is... In the regular, that you're waiving the rules and declaring an emergency, which you spoke to, so now we'll vote on it.
Roll call.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
So now we're at 295.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second. So this is a longstanding customer, longstanding licensed applicant. They've been doing this for a number of years, I think maybe 20 or more, where they own a property, and they, among other things, they sell some used cars out of that property. In reviewing the application, there's no changes or anything to, to what they've done in prior years, and they have all the necessary paperwork and insurance in place.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, can we do a voice vote on this? Okay. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay, so motion to waive the rules and have an emergency to approve the application 296.
Second. Made and seconded. Counselor Wright?
So again, this is the gentleman that spoke in public comment. He's also a longstanding person who's been selling secondhand vehicles. His situation's a little different in that he does everything through the internet, so there are no vehicles on his property at all, and he works out of his, out of his residence. There's been no reported violations of those circumstances in the time that he's been doing this.
Now going to vote to waive the rules and declare the emergency by majority.
All those in favor, roll call.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
And now a motion to approve the application 296.
Motion made and approved. Any discussion? Voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, great, thank you. All right, that would get us to...
We are back in communications.
Thank you for your diligence.
We're at Communication 684, the final report for the Ad-Hoc Committee on Water Project Prioritization.
Motion to receive and file Communication 684.
Second. Counselor Preston?
Thank you. So at long last, we have delivered the report on, from the Ad-Hoc Committee on Water Infrastructure Prioritization. Almost seems a little anticlimactic after so very much work. There actually, we, I went through the, we had 12 members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, and we met over 10 times, and with over 16 hours of time, actually over 16 hours of time in meeting, not to mention all of the work that had to happen in the background to make all of those meetings productive. And I really can't thank the team enough. We had participation from everybody, almost everyone made every single one of those meetings. I do want to stand out a little special thanks to Pete King, who is our water superintendent, as well as John Eric White, our city engineer, both of him whom just really pulled together a hierarchical effort to distill a lot of information and make it really understandable for the team so that we could make some prioritization. So the water projects are, they're huge, frankly, and really expensive, and it's been very daunting to tackle their prioritization and a path forward on them. But so the team, basically, you know, once we got educated on all of the various aspects of the water system, we worked together to define the risks to the system, the projects themselves, so giving scope to the projects, the risks mitigated by each projects, and the interdependencies between the projects. Once we'd agreed to all of the parameters, the team chose to categorize the projects as high, medium, and low priorities. We originally had set out to actually rank all of the projects in order. Frankly, getting to that level of detail was really not going to be allowable within the timeframe that we had, so we really decided to put them into high, medium, and low priorities instead. So of those, the committee strongly urges that the city embark on the high priority projects to getting them to full design, so that we can have more informed decisions on both firm timelines and firm costs of the projects. And furthering design will also strengthen the abilities, expected grant applications, and, you know, we're definitely going to need grants to help us pay for these projects, and having really strong information in terms of the timelines, the permitting challenges, the costs, and having strong applications for these grants will really behoove the city. So the projects that we ranked as high priority projects in no particular order are the upper artichoke reservoir raw water line, the Indian Hill raw water line, the lower artichoke reservoir dam improvements, water supply protection and watershed master plan, and a new water treatment facility. It's worth noting that the Water Enterprise Fund does not currently have enough money in it to drive all of these projects to 100% design. The committee also urges that the city embark on the formation of an intermunicipal working group, as requested by West Newbury, so that there is better information exchange between the communities, and a path toward developing an intermunicipal agreement with West Newbury, which will make these projects able to be moved along. Coordination, cooperation with West Newbury is going to be critical to the success of these projects. The committee also strongly recommends that the next council create another ad hoc to continue the work that this ad hoc has done, and to continue to track the projects, the pro, sorry, to track the progress of the projects as they move forward in design. It's also, it's really been a really wonderful experience, I think, for, you know, not only the counselors involved, to get more involved, are informed on the projects, but also to, for the residents to be able to understand the process. And as design moves forward on these projects, I think it is likely that some of the prioritization of the projects may shift slightly because of the timelines and permitting issues, and so the next ad hoc could really look at the prioritization of the projects as things shift around. And then lastly, this ad hoc was not able to tackle the financial considerations of these projects, and it, I think it would be very important for another ad hoc to do some financial modeling and use that tool, because the expenses are going to be huge, and the city is going to have to really figure out how we're going to pay for these projects. The report, the scoring metrics that the team utilized, all the presentations and supporting documentation are available on a project page, which was developed by the Special Products Manager. The links to all the meetings, including the topics discussed, minutes, recording, and supporting presentations are available in appendix of the report. This has been a ton of work. It has also been, at least for me, extremely rewarding. We've learned a great deal through this process, and I hope that this work will really inform the administration and the process better in the future. And I just want to say thank you again to everyone who is involved in making this happen.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Z?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just wanted to say thank you as well to the chair and to the members. Tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. Extending on that, I think this is worthy of more than a receiving file. I would suggest that it, that motion come off the table and instead sent, park it in Community, in Public Works and Safety for now, and then in the event that a new ad hoc is formed, it can be removed from Public Works and referred to this new ad hoc, or it could also be referred to a standing committee to conduct some of the analysis. For example, budget has budget expertise, and if you wanted a numerical look at it, you could do it in that way, and try and really get some more mileage out of this report, given all the work that was done on it. So that's my, my concrete suggestion for tonight. My question through the chair, either to the chair or through the chair as they see fit, could you talk more to a resident about the risk that you feel like you've identified in a one-year, three-year, five-year, just to a resident user of the water, which I think almost everybody is, right? You turn on the tap, the water comes out. What are we concerned about for 2026? I've read the report, I have some ideas, but I, rather than me saying what mine are, three years, five years, because one thing I think, the biggest learning thing for me is we've been very focused on storms, and the 500-year storm, and this, you know, the backflow events and that kind of stuff we hear a lot about, but there are actually more immediate concerns around being able to treat the water, and the quality, and, you know, availability of our reservoirs and so forth. So I'm wondering if the chair could just, if a resident stopped you on State Street and said, "What's going on with water? How's the risk look?" Could you characterize it a little bit?
So first, let me just say, I'm more than happy to take the receiving file off the table if my second or whoever that was agrees. I'd be very happy to see this move into another committee, and I'm very passionate about it continuing to have a life, so I'm very happy to do that. And I guess maybe while I'm on the floor, I will make the motion to, just to make sure that we don't forget it along the way, make the motion to send it to, I'm going to say Public Works and Safety, probably makes the most sense?
Second.
If I have a second?
And to invoke 7H to send it on.
Oh, and invoke 7H to, we, the rule 7H to make it go to the next...
To use. To use. To use.
To use, thank you.
Using the rules.
So that motion was made by Counselor Preston, seconded by Counselor Granis.
Do you want to use that motion first, and then I can address the rest of the questions?
Oh, this is the motion.
So in the course of discussing that motion, if you want to answer the question, that would be good.
All right, thank you. So to your question, thank you. I've said a lot about the Ad-Hoc Committee as we've gone along, so I was trying to keep this, but I'm very happy to answer the questions. So it is true. I think there has been a great deal of focus on, you know, climate change, backwater events as our number one challenge with the water system, and it really is much bigger than that. I think probably the biggest thing that we're facing right now is the algae blooms in the reservoirs. You'll see in the report, there is a recommendation from our lymnologist, the vendor that does the testing and the treatment of the reservoirs. We treated the reservoirs six times this year. We've never in a year treated them more than three times in one year. The lymnologist expert told us that we basically have no choice whatsoever, other than to do what is called an alum treatment, which is a treatment that is different than what we use copper sulfate now. This alum treatment essentially ties up the phosphorus that's in the reservoir, and the phosphorus is what feeds the algae. So this alum treatment is anticipated to be about $650,000. It is currently unbudgeted. So it is certainly something that the next council is going to need to take up. And that will buy us about three years of time, so we will tie up the phosphorus for about three years. Also, beyond just the backwater events, which I'm, I am going to talk about because they are a major risk as well, I think the aging infrastructure that we have is a really major problem as well. Certainly something that we weren't even considering when we went into this is the development of a, well, it was not even on the CIP, I guess is a better way to say it, is the development of a brand-new water treatment facility. The round now is that the old federal regulations for removal of TFS from the water, that regulation moved out. So that regulation, we now are required to do it by 2031. The previous regulation, we would not have had time to do a pilot study and do the design and build of a new water treatment facility in time to meet that regulation. Now that that regulation has moved out, it makes a great deal of sense that we would, rather than spending $21 million on an addition to the existing facility, which is 40 years old, and rapidly, if not already, past its useful life, it would make much more sense to put that $20 million toward the approximately $60 million that it will cost to build a new water treatment facility, because the addition to the existing facility, if we were to spend $21 million doing that, it would not be, you would not be able to utilize that in the new facility, which we're going to need to build anyways. So that aging infrastructure is a really major challenge to, and risk to the system as well. And then the backwater events, you know, to me, the, beyond, this is just my opinion, not the entire committee's opinion, but beyond the need to really look at new strategies of treating the reservoirs, to me, the number two thing that we have to look at is the dam at the lower reservoir, the lower artichoke reservoir. The dam, the spillway that's there today sits three feet below the FEMA floodplain, and, you know, it, it's at risk, it is very much at risk, and if that backwater event were to happen, the dam itself is in very poor condition, it is very likely that it would destroy the dam entirely. We would lose all of the, the terminology we use is that we would need to sacrifice the lower artichoke. The very challenging piece of sacrificing the lower artichoke is that is the only place where we have intake for raw water to go to our water treatment facility. So if, if there were a backwater event that destroyed the dam at the lower artichoke, we would sacrifice the lower artichoke, and we would not have an intake pipe to be able to bring water to the treatment facility for treatment. So there are a lot of risks to the system, and that's why we have so many of the projects really end up as very high priority projects. But in order for us to manage all of these risks, we have to do these projects, and they are going to be exceedingly costly.
So, thank you. That's kind of my, my lead as well. But in more late terms, I would just say, you know, everybody's pretty familiar with the overuse of antibiotics, you know? Like, if you use them too much, then you get a strain that's resistant to that. That's, that's how I look at some of the treatments we've been doing in the artichoke, is we're running up against the theoretical limits of what those things can do, and we're teaching the problems, the algae, how to react, so you can only go so far. And that's really, to me, when I think about 2026, like, that's the biggest challenge I see before us, and the $650,000 is a big financial challenge, you know, without getting into the weeds of the size of the Enterprise Fund and the amount of retained earnings they have and all those things. That's a big hit, just to keep it very simple. The other takeaway I had was that the timeline seems to be, you know, in the three-to-five-year time period that something needs to happen. I'm not sure all of it can or will happen in that three-to-five years, but that's the, beyond getting through like the 2026 season and getting through the algae blooms and so forth, it, that's kind of the timeline we're talking about. The last point I just wanted to make is that we were asked this year to grant higher water sewer rates, sort of in the vision that these projects were going to come to fruition. On the one hand, I voted for it. On the one hand, there's a certain logic to building a reserve. On the other hand, continuing to build a reserve without having them, the plan should continually be coming into more focus, and I worry that it's, it's not always coming into more focus, sometimes getting less focused at times, and that's frustrating. But I'm just standing up on the floor now so that in six months, there's no surprise. When the next rate setting happens for water sewer, which should be about that timeline, is typically done around May or June, could be sooner if you end up with an emergency situation or something like that, where you've got to dump out cash and things like that. But there is a desire and a need for some real actual plan to come forward that shows how any of this can make sense financially, because if we do it on an emergency basis, it will cost double what you think it will cost under normal circumstances, and these are huge projects. I mean, $60 million? We have $100 million of debt across the city today, 100 total, general fund, enterprise funds, all of them roll up anyways to the city. So that's like having a million-dollar mortgage and then borrowing another $600,000. It's a lot, so that should give people heartburn and give them concern. Obviously, we have to rise to meet these challenges, and that's why I think this could follow the model of the waterfront ad hoc. We stuck with it for a while, and I do think that it was painful at times, but it was, it was worthy, and we did get some dividends off of it, and there became a time when it became obvious that it didn't have a need anymore, but I don't, we haven't hit that point yet. So those are some of my takeaways, and again, with gratitude to the chair and the members and everybody who participated.
Yeah, just to add on, and first of all, I do really want to give a shout out and a thank you to Chair Preston.
a thank you to Chair Preston. The efficiencies, if anyone watches our minutes, or, I'm sorry, our meetings, we really couldn't get to what we did in the timeframe we had if it wasn't for our Chair being really good at kind of herding the cats, I would say, sometimes. So thank you. Really, really mean it. This is a great product. I also agree, though, with the Ward One Councilor that I'd like to see it continue and move to the committee, so I'm glad we're going in that direction. The other thing I also want to emphasize, you know, one of the members, Mark Spencer, with the Water Sewer Commission, was part of the committee, but also not having a DPS Director, who tends to be kind of like the Andy Port for the Planning and Development Committee or the Planning Board, the DPS Director and not having, and having someone in a kind of, in a short-term or temporary kind of role is a little bit going to be problematic, I think, as we start next year. So I really do think the ad hoc would be a very important space, because we did talk about the Water Sewer Commission, also kind of, you know, getting and being a little bit more also focused, and this ad hoc effort, I think, really did help raising questions and also some opinions. So to me, I think this really would make sense, especially early in the year, and so I'm completely in favor of that. I do also just want to add a couple of things about what I learned. When we talk about the new water treatment plant, the addition that was being considered was really to tackle PFAS. That was really what it was supposed to do. And because, because previously, the timeframe was 2027 or 2020?
I think it was 2029.
29. So there was an earlier timeframe, so that's what the addition was going to tackle. But now, since that's been moved to 2031, the new water treatment plant will be able to address and treat water from algae blooms, which to me was a fantastic kind of, you know, once we have the new plant, they can tackle it. We don't have to do the solutions we were talking about before. That's why the alum treatment is a short term, gets us three years, because a new water treatment plant, also, the state requires it has to be piloted. It has to go through a pilot phase, too. So a lot of good things were learned, and I think many of us came away with, like, understanding a little bit of what that timing needs to look like. Thank you.
To Council Con, Council Preston.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to reiterate how important I think it is to have another ad hoc in the next council. I think it's been really, this is going to be huge for the city for many years. And I think the more informed that the council can be and more informed that the residents can be, so that there, you know, there are meetings happening out in the public, I think it's really going to really help take the edge off on these projects, because they're going to be very, very expensive, and people really are going to have, it's going to have to happen. So, but I will say, it does not need to work at nearly the feverish pace that we have been working at. In this particular one, we were really up against this deadline of this council turning over. So hopefully, it'll be a little bit easier for the next ad hoc. I just did want to add one more thing about, as we go back to the treatment of the algae blooms. So one of the things that actually is listed here as a medium priority that I think is a little bit of a falsehood is the dredging of the lower and upper artichokes. And the reason that it's a, it was categorized as a medium priority is only because of the fact that we cannot do that dredging until after the Indian Hill raw water line has been built. And the rationale is that because, again, our water intake only comes from the lower artichoke today, if the Indian Hill raw water line didn't exist, we would be dredging and pulling water from the same water source, which, you know, for many reasons, is not a very good idea. So I just want to really point out that while this is categorized as a medium priority, that is really because of the interdependencies, not because of the fact that it's not a high priority. As I stated, the alum treatment, so the Council from Ward One made a very good point, the lymnologist needs to do a little more testing, but she was very clear that she feels that the algae in the reservoirs is becoming resistant to the current treatment, which is why we really have no choice but to move to this more expensive alum treatment. But even that is only going to really work for about three years. Beyond, the only way that we can really move past the situation that we have with the algae blooms is to dredge these reservoirs. They are flooded farmland, so there's, it's full of biomaterials that are feeding the algae, and until it's dredged, that's not going to go away. And so it's, well, it has moved to a medium priority. It's another expansion project that really needs to get done, just has to be done in sequence. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Council McCollum?
Yep. I too, I was a member of the committee, and I too would like to thank the Chair for driving us to a conclusion quicker than everyone would have liked, but it was necessary. To put it in comparison, the time we met, we conducted a whole year's worth of water and sewer meetings in a six-week timeframe. And so it wouldn't have been possible without all of the pre-work that has been done over the last three or four years in planning and engineering and getting to design to a certain level. But this was a critical point, and it does speak to having another ad hoc in that council is bringing a different perspective, and the next focus there is to be on the financing as much as anything else to be able to do that, is that we, what we've learned, what I take away is, we're at high risk for the next five years, because it's going to take us that long to actually put measurable actions in place within that timeframe. That's additional planning, that's actions, that's financing, things like that to begin. And then after five years, I think it will drop down to a medium, because things will start to get into a roll and move along. But again, it wouldn't have been possible without the members of the committee, the inputs from the staff, as well as the public who are there, prioritizing and reprioritizing things that we were talking about. We had something as a high priority, and then all of a sudden, it was not on the list. Things like that, that were very germane to the discussion and conversation. So I just want to add my voice to the fact that I want to thank the Chair for driving us to these conclusions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Council Donahue?
Just real quick, I just, again, I just want to thank the test, the jobs, okay.
And as a member, yeah, that was, you must have done great on your term papers that were due the next morning, because you really made it happen. So thank you for that. All right, so the motion on the floor, which was made and seconded, refer it to Public Works and Safety for now, and invoke 7H to carry it over into the next year. And we can do that with a voice vote, we just need a majority for both of those. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that passes. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Communication 685, the move to the City Council for the ADU zoning update.
Motion to collectively move 685 and 686 to Planning and Development invoking Rule 7H.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, and maybe I can, can we just add on the ordinance 210 as well, since it's all together?
Yes.
Okay, and adding ordinance?
210, which is the zoning amendment for accessory dwelling units.
210.
So thank you to my two sponsors here. We met last week with Director Port and a zoning administrator, Blanchet, to go through the updated zoning minutes, accessory dwelling units. It is updated to the December 2nd, which is in the council packet. What we got was the update going from principal dwelling unit to principal dwelling, which was the updated verbiage that was recommended through Council Igerman, and we did that through the Standing Board as well. What we did not get to, which the two sponsors had been working diligently even up until the day we met with the city solicitor, was how we were going to handle the ADUs within a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, and whether we could actually do that with a special permit granting authority, or if that would be by right. The city solicitor is still working on this with Director Port, so the recommendation is that we move this into the next legislative session, invoking Rule 7H. We have until February 11th to get this through, so we think by then, we should have better verbiage from the city solicitor. And two communications actually sums up what we asked the city solicitor and Director Port to do. So if we remove all three of these to the PND for the next session, that would be appropriate, and by February 11th, we can get this wrapped up. And I'll move that, too.
Okay, thank you. Procedurally, and maybe the clerk, and I see people going through their rules. So the two new communications could be referred to Planning and Development and invoke 7H. The ordinance 210 is listed as coming out of committee, so we'll go back in committee.
Correct. We'll go back in. What was, we brought it out of committee so that we could recommend to the council to invoke 7H and then send it back into committee.
Okay.
And it is sponsored by councils who will be continuing, so there's no issue with that.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? So this is collectively on all three?
Yes.
All right, all right.
I would do a roll call.
Roll call on this ordinance, yeah. All right, so a roll call on referring them or re-referring them to Planning and Development and invoking 7H on all three. Roll call.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCollie?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
That now takes us to the appointments. So you have the reappointments, starting with, how would you like to do these? Do you want to do them one at a time? You've moved them into the regular?
Maybe read them collectively, and I think Council Zede has his hand up.
So we have Appointment 608, Robert Uleg, 174 Merrimack Street to the Tree Commission until 12:15:28. Appointment 609, Joe Texera, 44 Hale Street to the CPC until 12:15:28. Appointment 610, Richard Max Tilson, 30 Winter Street to the Board of Health until 12:15:28. Appointment 611, Michael Merriman, 9 Unicorn Circle Amesbury, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 612, Michael Mallet, 7 Summit Drive, Atkinson, New Hampshire, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 613, Gregory Downs, 40 River View Drive, Newbury, Assistant Harbor Master. Appointment 614, Ben Molner, 12B Summerwood Drive, Hampton, New Hampshire, Assistant Harbor Master, I'm sorry, and Shellfish Constable and Special Police Officer, all of them are. Andrew Malatesta of 42 Pike Street, Salisbury, Assistant Harbor Master, Shellfish Constable and Special Police Officer until 12:15:28. Appointment 617, Paul Cardachi, 135 Beach Road, Unit C5, Salisbury, Constable for City Business until 11:15:29. And then new appointment, 616, Patty Ann Bampos, 2 Neptune Street to the Tree Commission to 11:15:29. Appointment 618, Stephen Diskin, 9A Monroe Street to the Andrews Library Branch to 11:15:27. And Appointment 619, Elizabeth Paige Bowman, 18 Elm Street to the Fruit Street Local Historic District Commission.
Motion to declare an emergency in the interest of appointing these folks before the hiatus, before the new session begins, in the interest of continuity here. Start with that.
Second.
Point of information, did you intend to bring in the reappointment, Jean Berger, as well, do all of this? Oh, it's just regular? Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So we're waiting for some, depending on emergency. Council Zede in a second.
And I think that was, that was the purpose right there.
Okay.
All right, so we'll do a roll call on this.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council McCollie?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Yeah, just, can I ask about the Fruit Street Local Historic District Commission? Is that mandatory to go to Planning and Development? It's not? Okay.
Council Shan?
For the record, I actually did ask the incoming Ward Two City Councilor about Ms. Bowman, and she said that she was actually recommended by a current person in the commission and by Bethany Graff. So I trust those two to be people that would want to have her on the Fruit Street Historic Commission.
Thank you. Council McCollum?
There are a number of folks here on PWS. Most of them are reappointments. I can say that I've spoken to all of them twice, as they've been reappointed for two years, and this would be the third time going around. They've been excellent candidates and bring positivity to the department.
Thank you. Council Shan?
I will add that to Appointment 609, Joe Texera, who has been serving the community for many years, and his reappointment as a Community Preservation Act committee member would be a good addition, a good reappointment.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. That's such a big thing, and lots of waiving, we'll do a roll call.
So this is to collectively approve all of those appointments. Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCollie?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes. Great, thank you. Thank you, Council Zede, for offering that. That would lead us to Appointment Second Reading, Jean Berger.
Jean Berger.
Motion approved on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call on a second reading.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCollie?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
That brings you to your orders that are continued from the previous meeting. It's Order 771, a gift acceptance report youth and rec foundation for $24,672. Order 772, which is a gift acceptance report youth and rec foundation for $3,433. Order 773, gift acceptance report rec and youth foundation.
Motion to approve collectively.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
Council Shan?
Yes.
Council Wright?
Yes.
Council Zede?
Yes.
Council Donahue?
Yes.
Council Grantis?
Yes.
Council Harmon?
Yes.
Council Con?
Yes.
Council Lane?
Yes.
Council McCollie?
Yes.
Council Preston?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Already handled, 778. That branch of the committees.
So Budget is pleased to report, we have no business coming out tonight. Thank you for your help with the tax rate setting last week. As I do at the end of every year, I just really want to take a moment to thank my colleagues. I was reading the USPS carrier motto today, neither rain nor snow nor wind, and that's the Committee on Budget and Finance. And Council Con and Council Wright, we've handled two budgets, a supplemental, a debt exclusion, countless transfers, orders, ordinances, union contracts. I didn't even want to calculate the number of hours on Zoom, because sometimes it can be sad, sometimes it can be happy, so I didn't do that, but it was a lot of meetings. I very much miss Council Wright and his acumen, financial acumen, and it's been a pleasure to work with them, and we approved the last of our minutes tonight, so I'm really happy to bring Budget in and close it out with a clean slate. And thank you so much, councilors, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, that will lead us to Community Services.
Thank you. Yes, we do not have anything coming out tonight either, but I also want to take the opportunity to thank Council Harmon and Council Donahue. Well, we have had it a little easy, the last little bit. I will remind everyone that we, no, but we did handle the rec center, you know, and that was a lot of meetings and a lot of, you know, contentious at times, and I thought we did a really great job of it, and I really appreciate the work that we've done, and I really appreciate the time from both of the councilors. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council Preston. That will lead us to General Government. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file Ordinance 209.
Second.
Thank you. So we met last week, it seems, December 1st, last Monday, and this has been in committee for a couple of months, and as the original sponsors were okay with this, you know, being
We did vote three to zero to refer, to receive and file and bring it to you for that. Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Yes, first I'll thank the committee for engaging. I think this was very productive, learned about some alternative approaches, but I'm not giving up on this. But also to, to my incoming colleagues, wanted to make sure that what we had was something that the incoming council could feel good about, and so look forward to their fresh ideas. And while I'm standing, I also just want to thank my colleagues who won't be here, whom I've learned so much over the last two years, that informs this and hopefully future work. So more to come on this, but for now, I appreciate everybody voting to receive and file.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Zied?
Thank you. When this came in, I, I said on the floor, I appreciated the sentiment, and I still do. The thing I wanted to flag the most is, is the city solicitor aspect. While I didn't agree with the language here about city solicitor, my epiphany in the last couple of months was that simple replacement of the city solicitor is not likely to resolve our challenges. I think the council made a big step by creating the new rule where we have a sort of more formalized process around invoking the city solicitor and having two counselors and transparency around both the questions that were posed, as well as what was received back. And I think one way that this, this could continue on in its next life may be to continue that pondering of that question, which is now to extend how the city council and the executive branch can, can somehow manage to find a way to be collaborative on city solicitor, and if not collaborative, at least transparent. So being able to share and exchange information about what opinions have been received and to get them in a timely fashion. I find that sometimes timing makes all the difference. When things are provided late, it can create challenges and bad or ill feelings, and that can hamper some of the work that we're doing. I also understand sharing things too early before they're fully baked can be a challenge. So finding that right balance is something, and I, I just stand because I think it's so urgent that, you know, if we're going to hire a new city solicitor in January, which certainly is the way it's looking right now, and that's our ordinance-driven timeline, we need to come up with some answer around this question, and it has never been answered in the 10 years that I've been on. Different administrations and council approach it differently, but if they truly are a city solicitor for the city, then we need to have access to that information and to all be playing from the same book, so at least the debate can be more pure on policy, rather than just running around in circles arguing about opinions, rather than what it is we'd like to do or accomplish and where the majority may lie on something like that. So thank you to the sponsor, and maybe this could be the next chapter.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion? So the motion is to receive and file, it's an ordinance, so I think we should do a roll call.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes. All right, thank you. Counselor Zied, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, Counselor Zied?
Sorry, just two things. One is, one thing we did a couple of years ago that I think was helpful was asked the clerk in the month of January to mail or email applicants who had an event in the last 12 months to remind them that they need to apply to have an event in the city, and that winter is a great time to apply, and not July 3rd when your event is July 9th. So maybe if there is bandwidth sufficient in, in the month of January, the clerk's office could just pull emails and just try and shoot out a quick email as a friendly service, reminder that people should apply. And then the other thing I wanted to say, just on the cost, was I think my understanding is they pay for the details, so the police department should be charging what it costs to run this, and if they're hard to fill, then they need to be charging presumptively the overtime rate or whatever it is, you know, not more so, but just whatever it takes to fill those roles. We shouldn't be, and I, the chair is nodding, so I think that's already the policy, but if it's not, we can always reinforce that that's how it should be working.
All right, thank you, Counselor Zied. Any further discussion? All right, all, a voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve application 293.
Second.
So this is our friends at Bar 25. They, they, this is, this is part of their response to not having a parklet, but wanting to have some accommodations, because they don't actually have a parklet. So what they've asked in previous years, and what they're asking again this year, is if they could leave the planters where they, where they are, out of the way, so they don't have to pay what they say is about, you know, additional costs to have them taken off-site and brought back onsite again. We had some conversation, unfortunately, the applicant didn't appear, so we put it forward without the applicant. That's the, the issue with this coming in the format that it came in. There's no contact information, no phone number, and I tried the restaurant a number of times to try and reach somebody, and of course, my hours and the restaurant hours didn't align to allow that to happen. What we, what we are recommending out of committee is that we extend this for, for another year, another cycle. If you look at the picture, you'll see that the planters are up, right up against the edge of the building. They're not like that right now. So, so this would be subject to them complying with their own design, their own drawing through the winter, so that we can clear the sidewalks and, and not create an obstacle there during that time. So that was the recommendation that came out of committee, three to zero.
Counselor McCauley on Counselor Khan?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say, if the clerk can make sure we, you know, considering there's no communication, they weren't even there, enforcement, making sure they do this, like how do we know? So if maybe we could get a notification out that it's really contingent on following this design. I don't know if anyone has ideas, but I wouldn't mind if the clerk reached out to me.
I can do that.
Thank you. That's an excellent point. I think it's under the purview of the accessibility coordinator to, to be the enforcement official.
I can, if you'd like, I can send them an email to, to let them know that this passed with this requirement, and then if they're not doing it, I can reach out to the ADA coordinator and let, let him know.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor President. So one of the things that comes up in this type of discussion is the fact that we're using city property to store things, and so we're storing things in the right of way. And so we did make an exception when we have outdoor dining. We've all agreed that we want to try to move forward with that, and we make some accommodations for that. And so at the end, we take up everything and we move it offsite, and we go back to where it was. So there's an inconvenience for five or six months. Now, we, we, we had suggested to the applicant a year ago, when this came out, that they move away from these larger planters that are tough to store, et cetera, along the way, which is one of the reasons behind doing a one-year type of approval that we did last year, and again, why we do a, a one-year again going forward. If, if they can't afford to store the plant, get them off the same property, then, you know, the next batch of licensing and permit folks may want to consider amendments to the parklet that if they store property, then they have to pay a fee to store equipment and things like that on city property. Because that's really what it is. We're, we're talking about Threadneedle Alley, which is narrow to begin with. We have, we have protruding curbs that are awkward. The planters themselves are in the, the alley themselves. They're much larger than these pictures are. They actually shade part of the windows, that's how tall they are, et cetera, along the way. So I mention it because when, when we give a little bit like this, like we did last year, then we have the exact same planters in the exact same spots, and the message really is that we were hoping that this was a transition year to be able to do that. And, and so I just, as a suggestion, I'm suggesting we reinforce that message, that you, thank you.
Thank you. And it's not far with this application, but there are a number of other accommodations that have been made for outdoor dining, where some places haven't even availed themselves of their outdoor dining through the summer, but the, but all the stuff is still there. And so if you're walking down, down In Street, there's, there's, it's obviously, you can see where the, where, you know, where the tables and chairs have pretty much been abandoned there throughout the winter. And so I think if I was going to provide some advice to whoever chairs license and permits, you know, in the future, I think, and the council as a whole, I think that's something we need to look at in, in, with a longer view, because the city is placing the parklets and removing them, and I think that the other restaurants that have the same privileges should be operating under the same set of placing them and then removing them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, so the motion is to approve application 293.
Second.
Thank you. So this is the, this was, this was placed into, into license and permits as a placeholder to have a conversation around the feasibility, the appropriate fees to charge, after a number of requests of the administration to provide us with the actual costs for this year, we did not receive those. So again, this should be a follow-on from whoever picks this up, if that's their, if that's the intent of the new council, to reexamine the, the, the costs to, to, to both cover the cost of the program and also to secure some funds for the eventual capital replacement of these, of these parklets at some point. So that's why I'm asking to receive and file.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Voice vote on order 672 to receive and file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, that, thank you.
And so I too would like to thank my compatriots on the License and Permits Committee. I'd like to thank the President of the Council and my fellow counselors for entrusting the chairmanship to me this, this time around. It's been, it's been enjoyable. It's been a little perfunctory. If I may editorialize, I think the next council might want to consider moving along the continuum as we did with, with the street events, that, that, that the, we provide the clerk with the opportunity to, to approve those if there's no changes. I think it might be helpful for the future councils and for the future Chair of License and Permits to be able to provide some of that, expand upon that with some other things, like, you know, secondhand licenses that have had no changes in the last 20 years might be something that we do consider having the clerk make those approvals.
Thank you. Chair Wright? That will lead us to planning and development.
Counselor President, motion to approve appointment 565, Matthew Blanchett to the Fruit Street Historic Commission. Mr. Blanchett came and spoke to us last week. He is, he was on the Newbury Port Preservation Trust for many years. He was actually encouraged to join by Tom Colter John himself. He spoke to his 15 to 20 years as a mason for historic buildings and structures, a local realtor. He appreciates the historic aspects of the Newbury Port community. He has a website called Find Your Place in History, specific to historic homes. Had the incoming Ward Two Counselor speak on his behalf, saying that she was very much in favor of his appointment, and the committee voted two to zero to approve his appointment.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion to collectively receive and file communication 529 and 534, letters from Mr. McCarthy and the administration on signage.
Second.
These two communications were in the package earlier in the session, and we were receiving a file because we did pass the signing ordinance, signage ordinance, so we voted two to zero to receive and file.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on those? So collectively receiving in file communications, 529 and 534, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And last but not least, motion received and filed communication 635, an email from Walt Thompson regarding rental housing.
Second.
The committee did discuss with Director Port, as we still are waiting for the city solicitor to give us some answers from some questions that we did have regarding the condo conversions that we discussed earlier in the year, when apartment houses get converted over or change ownership and they go into a condo plan. We're hoping to get that before the city solicitor moves on. So the committee did vote to receive and file this, but knowing that we are expecting some information from the city solicitor, we voted two to zero to receive and file.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor President, and to the Chair of Planning and Development. Do you know if we can ensure before we have the change in city solicitor, if we could have the clerk maybe try to press for something sooner than later? Thank you.
Yes, we did ask, and we said, you know, this should come along with the same information we're getting on the ADU, because it came in at the same time. So we're hoping that we can get it before they move on.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, motion to receive and file communication 635, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
So that is it for us. I mean, we do still have three that are getting moved to the next planning session, but I want to thank my two committee members. They are my partners in crime. We did get a lot of work done. Remember, we did pass Brown School zoning, we did pass MBTA community zoning, and we almost got the ADUs across the finish line again. But, you know, we got it across the first time, so thank you both. It's been fun.
Thank you. And public works and safety.
Thank you. Motion to receive and file communication 673. This is a letter from firefighters. It was a side letter agreement. This came about because of discussions we were having about the deputy chief along the way. This was provided, and it ended up in PWS. So we had some debate about this, and discussion about this in committee, and we were concerned that the agreement that we approved as a city council also had in Article 8, Section 1, that there'd be
It's been enjoyable. It's been a little perfunctory. If I may editorialize, I think the next council might want to consider moving along the continuum as we did with the street events, that we provide the clerk with the opportunity to approve those if there's no changes. I think it might be helpful for the future councils and for the future Chair of License and Permits to be able to provide some of that, expand upon that with some other things, like, you know, secondhand licenses that have had no changes in the last 20 years might be something that you consider having the clerk make those approvals.
Thank you. Chair Wright? That will lead us to Planning and Development.
Mr. President, Motion to approve Appointment 565, Matthew Blanchett, to the Fruit Street Historic Commission. Mr. Blanchett came and spoke to us last week. He is, he was on the Newburyport Preservation Trust for many years. He was actually encouraged to join by Tom Coulter, John himself. He spoke to his 15 to 20 years as a mason for historic buildings and structures, a local realtor. He appreciates the historic aspects of the Newburyport community. He has a website called Find Your Place in History, specific to historic homes. Had the incoming Ward Two councilor speak on his behalf, saying that she was very much in favor of his appointment, and the committee voted two to zero to approve his appointment.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
The motion to collectively receive and file Communication 529 and 534, letters from Mr. McCarthy and the administration on signage.
Second.
These two communications were in the package earlier in the session, and we were receiving and filing because we did pass the signage ordinance. So, we voted two to zero to receive and file.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on those? So, collectively receiving in-file Communications 529 and 534. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And last but not least, Motion Received and Filed Communications 635, an email from Walt Thompson regarding rental housing.
Second.
The committee did discuss with Director Port, as we still are waiting for the city solicitor to give us some answers from some questions that we did have regarding the condo conversions that we discussed earlier in the year, when apartment houses get converted over or change ownership and they go into a condo plan. We're hoping to get that before the city solicitor moves on. So, the committee did vote to receive and file this, but knowing that we are expecting some information from the city solicitor, we voted two to zero to receive and file.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President, and to the Chair of Planning and Development. Do you know if we can ensure before we have the change in city solicitor, if we could have the clerk maybe try to press for something sooner than later? Thank you.
Yes, we did ask, and we said, you know, this should come along with the same information we're getting on the ADU, because it came in at the same time. So, we're hoping that we can get it before they move on.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Motion to receive and file Communications 635. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
So, that is it for us. I mean, we do still have three that are getting moved to the next planning session, but I want to thank my two committee members. They are my partners in crime. We did get a lot of work done. Remember, we did pass Brown School zoning, we did pass MBTA community zoning, and we almost got the ADUs across the finish line again. But, you know, we got it across the first time. So, thank you both. It's been fun.
Thank you. And Public Works and Safety?
Thank you. Motion to receive and file Communication 673.
Second.
This is a letter from firefighters. It was a side letter agreement. This came about because of discussions we were having about the deputy chief along the way. This was provided, and it ended up in VWS. So, we had some debate about this, and discussion about this in committee, and we were concerned that the agreement that we approved as a city council also had in Article 8, Section 1, that there'd be no side letters individually or collectively, and yet here was a side letter along the way. So, it led us to a couple of questions that we'd like to ask the incoming legal counsel. I'm not sure that it's urgent, but the first one was, can a union contract that has been duly approved by the city council be amended or augmented by a side letter without returning to the city council for a vote? And Clerk Sullivan, I'll provide these to you in writing. And then, the second one is, how can the side letter be considered valid under the provisioning that we ban side letters individually and collectively going forward? And so, we want to raise this point, because we've gone through, in my six years, we've gone through a process of uncovering and trying to get, no longer allow side letters going forward. We want to be as transparent as possible in terms of contractual arrangements and agreements, and so, this is just another step in that. But, we had approved three to zero to receive and file it with the additional two questions to be asked in the incoming city solicitor.
Okay. Counsel Zied?
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to kind of double down on my view, which is that I think common sense dictates that if an agreement is passed and you want to change that agreement, it would be natural that you would change it through the same path by which it was already approved the first time around. The path for approving a union contract is negotiation, agreement and acceptance between the union and the administration, and then presentation to the council for an affirmative vote to codify or make that contract. That's the process by which it gets passed. It would be impossible to explain to anybody that that then, after that process, it could be amended by cutting out the third party to the agreement, which is the city council. So, we have a new HR director, we're going to have a new city solicitor, and I just, on the recording, wanted to say, I don't think side letters are valid. They don't make any sense, and that's not to say that agreements can't change, or be augmented, or added to. They just need to follow a common sense process, which is to go down the same path. And there are three parties to those types of agreements: the union, the executive branch, and the legislative branch, and we can't be cut out in subsequent negotiations if there needs a need for them. We'd be happy to take them up budget often did and turn them around quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion to receive and file with those additional comments noted by the clerk. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, Motion to receive and file Communication 680.
Second.
This is the communication, this is the Newburyport Surveillance Technology Policy. This is a direct result of the work that we did a year ago in passing a Surveillance Technology Use Ordinance where it was. And the city was to, the administration was to come up with a policy for that. They came in 11 months after we had requested it, but it did come in, and we did amend it, and we approved it at our last council meeting going forward. That new policy did make it into this report, but that's just an issue of timing going forward. One of the things that I wanted to note here, and we spent some time, this has gone through two chiefs of staff, and we had present for us the IT director, as well as Police Department Officer Whitney with us as well, to talk about some of the things that went on. As you see here, and you go through the report, they talk about the methodology and the overview of the technologies that were used. But our ordinance was much more broad in terms of what technologies we're using. So, although they focused on security camera and body cameras, which seems to be what some people have, you know, jumped ahead and said, this is the only thing that matters, there are still things like license plate readers, and GPS, and drone technology, and electronic keypad. All of this information collects data on our staff, it collects data on our residents, and we're not effectively managing the data going forward. And in many ways, the report falls a little bit short on that, because it's trying to justify the use of security cameras going forward. And so, there was, there were some things that were, let's say, somewhat disturbing, if you will, in this, is that we talked about the number of cameras. A year ago, we passed and amended an ordinance, 587, and we had listed out the camera, the camera locations, and who had access to them. Well, we just learned that we have more cameras that we had approved, and some of them work and some of them don't work. And so, that's in itself somewhat disturbing. As we see on Page 8, we talk about things like the costs that are there in terms of, these are the annual fees that we have to pay, the E&amp;E fixed security cameras, there's typo there, but the installation, as well as the door systems, costs $426,000, but we'll add on to that another $650,000 to get the cameras in the parking garage to actually work. And the parking garage started out with 19 cameras and now has 30. And again, we're not really too sure where those actual locations are within the parking garage. And the other part of this that should be eye-opening to all of us is, when they did a, as part of their methodology, they went to the different departments, they went to the fire station, the harbor master, parking garage, and library, and the senior center, and asked how the security cameras were being used. And the harbor master hasn't used it. Parking garage, they didn't work until June, and since then, no one's looked at them. The senior center, they have six cameras, but they only think they have one, and they think the police are looking at it, and the police aren't looking at it. The fire station has eight plus four. The four are live-streamed at headquarters, but no one looks at those. And the eight at fire, the cutter station was used twice, and once, they didn't have enough camera angles to see what the information was, but they have plenty of angles of the neighboring houses and properties and things like that. My point here is that we kind of went overboard, I think, with some of the security cameras, and we, given the modular nature of these end-to-end, of these E&amp;E cameras, the web-based, all they need is power, et cetera, along the way, we may want to, in the future, reconsider redeploying them from where they are today, and maybe taking, you know, there's five at the harbor master, and all of a sudden, now they want one for parking out of Plum Island, but maybe they could take one of those and move it out there, et cetera, along the way. When we want to upgrade things at the fire station at the headquarters, maybe we want to take one or two of the cameras from one station to another station to be able to stay within our fixed pricing going forward. And so, that's part of, that's part of what I think is a bit, it was the intent of this report for us to figure out that, remember, this is a baseline report. No one's written a report like this before. We created an ordinance that was, in many ways, forward-thinking, because as the discussion happened the other night, both the IT director and police were saying, technology is growing so fast that we can't, we can't keep up with it. And if we're expecting police force of the, you know, 22nd century to be able to respond, then we have to give them the tools to be able to do that. And that led, unfortunately, to the conversation, the CIP item of the dispatch center at the police department, which says that their current dispatch center is two laptops facing each other, and they're over 10 years old. So, we're handicapping ourselves along the way. Also in the report, we talk about the downtown cameras that don't work, but we use the ones from newburyport.com, but they don't record. And so, again, we're collecting all this data, and no one's looking at it, and no one's managing it, and we're deleting it after 30 days. And so, I do think that in the next session, that, the next report's not due for two years, but I think in the next session, that how we collect data and how we manage data on an IT level needs to be looked at. And the only, I'll just end with, the only department that is using their security cameras is the library. They have 17 of them, and they will profile you from the minute you walk in the door to when you leave. And that's part of their security. And they don't follow any of the rules, meaning, not the department head, but everyone in staff gets to look at them, because they find, they use it for queuing at different desks of, for example, there was five people at one desk, they look at the cameras, and they find out where you are, et cetera, and they'll shuffle staff to be able to do them. They were the only ones who actively and effectively use this in an operational manner. But again, it flies against the face of what the city has come up with as a policy to protect data and to protect civil liberties of the patrons that are there. So, this is what, kind of what we thought it was going to be, which is, in a way, full of contradictions, because we're not effectively taking seriously the privacy rights of our residents and our staff along the way. For example, we use GPS in tracking our DPS trucks, but we can't use them for performance indicators. We just use them for finding out where the trucks are along the way. So, this is the kind of information and contradictions that I think have to be worked through, not in a confrontational manner, but in a collaborative manner, because AI's coming down the pike. It's here already, and these things are just the tip of the iceberg. And the way we wrote our ordinance was to be able to provide some modicum of protections for people, for our residents, for our staff, et cetera, along the way. So, with that, we recommended three to zero to receive and file.
Okay. Any comment or discussion? Okay. Hearing none. You receive and file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, Motion to approve Ordinance 211, but I'd also like to waive the rules, Rule 9B, and take this up in one reading.
Second.
Okay.
The reason I'd like to waive the rules on this is because this is an ordinance, and it's simply the resident giving back a handicap spot, and there's no sense of kind of dragging this into next year and prolonging this.
Okay. All right, is, by having this come back, it's coming out of committee? Oh, so is it?
It is coming out. It's up.
Okay.
It came out in the consent.
Any discussion?
This is to waive the rules to approve in one reading. Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Harman?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, roll call?
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harman?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, roll call?
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. Any further discussion? Roll call on this.
To approve as amended in committee, Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Granis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, these are new, they, I'll make a motion to take out of committee, and, or, I think it's, I take it out of committee, invoke 7F on two items here, Communication?
7H?
7H, sorry.
Sorry.
Can't read my writing. I just wrote 7H.
Yes.
I'd like to take Communication 663 and 666 and invoke 7H.
Second.
The reason I'd like to do that is there's been new developments on both of these communications. The email on Coffin Street, there's been a meeting that happened between the Plenary Office, DPS, and Ward Council to go through some of the new uncovered facts that were going on, and I think there's a pathway that should have some discussion in the next session about that. This is not a resolution, nor getting to a resolution, but I think the placeholder should be passed along to be able to have that discussion, and I, it's just a recommendation to do that. Do you want to do the other one first, or we have to vote separately?
We could do collectively, I think.
Okay, collectively. And the other one, we came up early, the response from the city council, and we continue to get, we got information from, and we had information from our board council, that in some way, while the vote, they have been great, their methodology and calculation method was not, and shouldn't be looked together. And again, I think that, given the stakes of this and the need that we have in the super department for retained hearings, that they may want to, the council may want to pick this up and continue the conversation with city solicitor going forward.
Okay. So, the motion is collectively to invoke-
hope that the interim DPS Director has some policy or some criteria when it makes sense or not. I can imagine this, if we're proliferating this street with stop and slow, that could be, it could get a little out of hand. So I just want to make sure that we, and maybe this is another thing to kick to the next term, like, you know, what would be the policy or the criteria? You know, and I understand there were some issues with this specific situation, but just something I wanted to flag. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, no, good point, but usually written by NASCAR rules that they follow, et cetera, along the way. This was kind of a, you know, squeeze this in, kind of along the way. It's all about. I, my point is, I would think you'll see a proliferation of these throughout the city. I think there's other ways to better handle it.
All right. Any further discussion? A roll call, and most?
To approve as a minimum in committee, Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Counsel Zee?
Yes.
Counsel Dennehy?
Yes.
Counsel Grantis?
Yes.
Counsel Harmon?
Yes.
Counsel Kahn?
Yes.
Counsel Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Preston?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to, these are new, they, I'll make a motion to take out of committee, and, or I think it's, I take it out of committee, invoke 7H on two items here, communication?
7H?
7H, sorry. Can't read my writing. I just wrote it. 7H.
Yes.
I'd like to take communication 663 and 666 and invoke 7H.
Second.
The reason I'd like to do that is there's been new developments on both of these communications. The email on Coffin Street, there's been a meeting that happened between the planning office, DPS, and board council to go through some of the new uncovered facts that were going on, and I think there's a pathway that should have some discussion in the next session about that. Is, this is not a resolution or getting to a resolution, but I think the placeholder should be passed along to be able to have that discussion, and I, it's just a recommendation to do that. Do you want me to do the other one first, or we have to both second?
We could do collectively after.
Okay, collectively, and the other one, the came up early, the response from the city council, we continue to get, we got information from, and we had information from our board council, that in some way, while the vote, they have been great, their methodology and calculation method was not, and shouldn't be made together. And again, I think that, given the stakes of this and the need that we have in the super department for retained earnings, that they may want to, the council may want to pick this up and continue the conversation with city solicitor going forward.
Okay. So the motion is collectively to invoke Rule 7H on communication 663 and communication 666. And that was seconded. Any further discussion? A voice vote on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Those will carry over.
Thank you very much. Again, I'd like to thank committee members, Counsel Donahue and Counsel Grantis. I think we've tackled in the last two years some pretty complicated items, and I think we've been able to be crisp in our turnaround in a number of these. Public Works and Safety is a pretty broad type of brush that we paint with, from streets and sidewalks, all the way through the intellectual property that we just talked about in terms of surveillance, et cetera, along the way. So I want to thank them for their help, patience, and determination to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. That will lead us to Good of the Order. Any speech refined? Counsel Wright?
I'll keep very brief. Thanks to all of my people, or everyone that's served with me on the council. I've gotten to know all of you on an individual basis, and even though we didn't agree at times, we've always been agreeable. So I'd like to thank you for that, and look forward to the new council picking up the work that we've started. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counsel Donahue?
Thank you, Preston. Similarly, I just want to thank all of you for the opportunity to start with you, and though, yes, we have not always agreed, it is amazing how we can bounce back. So I do thank you all, and good luck to the new council in January.
And happy birthday, Sunday, yesterday. Counsel Preston?
Thank you, very briefly. I just want to say thank you as well. It really has been a pleasure to serve the people of your group, but also serve with my fellow colleagues. We have not always agreed, but I feel like we've done a lot of really good work, and I'm really proud of what we've done, and it's really been a joy working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.